At six oh one P M. Thank you all for being here tonight. Councilmember Hornick, which actually lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Certainly.
My pledge is to reply in another state. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice.
All right, if we could have a roll call, please, Linda.
Hey, Councilmember Hornick.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Sosa.
Here. And is there any reordering of the agenda tonight?
None this evening, Ms. Mayor.
Any public comments this evening?
None.
Perfect. We will move on to consent calendar. Tonight, we have item one, minutes of February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting. The list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty four twenty five. Resolution number twenty five oh seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beelton, California regarding parking restrictions for transit stop at New Library. Monthly treasures report, January thirty first, twenty twenty five. Financial report for the second quarter ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. A proof extension of Wine Country Express memorandum of understanding. And res- resolution number twenty five oh eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beelton, California requesting the board of supervisors of the county of Santa Barbara approve an all male and valid. Special election to be held on Tuesday, August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, and conducted by the Santa Barbara County Elections Office. So any items that would like to be removed or is otherwise can I?
I'd like to pull for discussion the red curb of for the bus stop location. Yes, because I hadn't, I didn't realize that was.
Is that item number three? That when you're speaking of item number three, okay. We will pull item number three for discussion. So then a say motion to approve items one, two, four, five, six, and seven.
So move.
Yes.
Is that a second?
Oh, excuse me, second.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi, Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sosa.
Hi. So with that, I guess we will start with item number three. Resolution twenty five oh seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beelton, California regarding pu- parking restrictions. For transit stop at New Library and our staff contact will be Public Works Director Rose Hess.
Yes, thank you. You too.
It just alarmed me that I didn't, and I apologize for not looking at this map earlier. But to take how many parking spots away of the, of the few parking spots we have for the library is going to take. I don't know what, I don't know what the schedule is for the bus.
The bus, the transit stop is usually scheduled three times a day, Monday through Friday. And then so part of that footage is going to include that little knuckle on the cul-de-sac area. So that gives the bus enough room to transition into towards the curb and park to pick up the transit riders.
Good. Is there no way you could? Because it's just going to take a lot of parking away from the whole thing. Does it have to be sixty feet?
Usually it's anywhere to double, minimum double the length of the bus, which is twenty five feet. So fifty and I counted for sixty. Just to because we're going to take portions of that knuckle. So vehicles have a hard time parking in there anyways, because they're all in the street or whatnot. So figured if if it's more towards the knuckle portion, we're taking up in theory less actual parking space.
Well, they, I've never seen problem parking there, but what if it was on the corner more and it's less space? So then it would also give us visibility of people coming out of that intersection, because a lot of times you take a left anyway. Maybe it was a little up for there. I just can't, I just don't like sixty feet of curb there. There was a way to reduce it, put it somewhere that would be useful. And then, and that reason I asked the times of is, do you know what time the bus would stop every day?
I do not. Right now, they're looking to restructure the timing for all the routes, because they're accommodating this, they're covering a couple of spots. Well, one, another spot in solving another spot in the valley. So they're kind of re looking at the entire schedule. So I don't have the exact times.
But the end, do they run weekends?
Sometimes on Saturdays, I think it depends on the general schedule.
Only because if they only ran till like three or four, you could have a time, no parking between. Whatever the first time the bus would need to be there to the last time the bus would be there. So in the meantime, people could use it. Just gonna do. It's just like a time, you know, it's like no parking Tuesdays because trash trucks coming or something. But if it if I just hate to take away, that's seven days a week. Nobody can park there. If we had it some kind of less restrictive for the red. Then we'd have more parking. I mean, because a lot of times it's going to be full, there's going to be people there and for them to just skip three parking spots. I don't think, I think we could figure something a little bit better.
I do worry, though, that if we have a situation where it's the enforcement element, that if there's a car there that has stayed late or gotten there early. A red curb is always known you don't park at, but wouldn't a bus situation, you can have an issue of now we have a towing situation, it messes up with the circulation. It's usually, I think, a safer bet to have a fully red. And we're not intending to have people park up here since the intention is long term.
Since you can't park with your tentacle, you know, and that's what you, that's when you, the only time you could enforce it. There's a time there. To have a sixty feet of of parking twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, or something that's going to happen within six hours, five days a week.
With the overall intention.
Not the only reason that there's going to be people going here.
But the overall intention was not for to have library parking be up on this side of the road. It's the eventually to guide down. So we're kind of trying to accommodate to ensure that there isn't parking up there.
Can I ask you a follow up question of Rose? Uh, I don't want to interrupt discussion. What about like, we did something like the bus parking just along that flat area in front, just a little bit further down before the the bulb out curve? Like if you're on exhibit A, I guess this is west. There's a long strip that seems like it'd be prime bus pullover parking spot, a little bit.
Further in front of the rear view park area?
Correct. Yeah, I don't even know if you need a red, red stripe anything for that, would you?
If some people are going to go to the park, we kind of budget that direction.
I can talk to S Y B T staff about that.
Is the audience for this bus usually seniors?
No, seniors typically util, well, they aren't precluded from this service. But typically seniors use dial ride and dial ride will take them right to the, to the front of the library. So this would be just part of the regular stop.
If I could make a suggestion, maybe we could get the answers to that. If there was this timeframe, we could walk it off and then maybe see if we could put it more to the west, if that would work.
I can do that. Requesting.
Just to see options.
Sorry, as if we put it more to the west when we have. Well, I guess if it's not red, but if we have events and stuff, it's cutting into like, like the wine and chili, that's for example, that's like prime parking to walk down to the to the park versus.
It's not, if it's smart for time, then we'll have that.
Yeah, but it's for the other red option.
Yeah, so I was thinking, at least this one's kind of out of the way. I was thinking maybe even right, like in front here, but you know, because like I know we promised people we weren't going to use this as parking for the library. And if we have that red striped, it helps.
Yeah, no, I like the fact that they're using the ball about too. I mean, I think that's that's smart. But I mean, I think to John's point, it's a valid point. And if the bus is only going to come for one drop off a day, if we could just make it not that. I mean, as the enforcement issues are harder to enforce, but the same could be said about red. Right? Like some parts in the range still enforce that.
So I will note that uh, part of the problem with pulling the bus onto the area right in front, we will do that with dial ride buses, because that's where the the ADA access point is for the property. But for the standard bus stop, we've tried to avoid that because we're trying to avoid driving another vehicle up through that neighborhood. We're not sure yet. The bus may have to go up Valley Dairy regardless. It's three trips a day and with any luck, it'll save a few trips from vehicles. But we're trying not, I should, yeah, Valley Dairy is where it has to up. We're trying to avoid having them drive up Dairyland as well. And if they pull on to up in front of the library. That's just one more trip up Dairyland. So it's a balancing act. We're asking the council to take a look at here.
That would be if we moved it to the east.
Yes, if you moved it to the east in front of the library. Yes, moving it to the west, you wouldn't necessarily have that problem. It would just be further for someone to walk if they were somewhat mobility impaired. Our objective in putting the the bus stop in that location was to get them as close as possible to the library without having to pull in front of the library itself. So, but we can put it wherever the council would like.
The go ahead.
Thanks.
Anyone say?
Okay, I didn't want to cut anybody. The, yeah, we did put it closer but like between the two houses and it wouldn't, I mean, if we moved it back towards the, as far as this view is, be less, I think.
So between the two houses?
Like, but yeah, right between the, where the two houses are, then it's not the driver, at least.
I'm sorry, which two houses?
On the next street and then, well, there's a driveway on one side and then the side. But also, the bus is also going to be used for the park. So it'll be closer to the park. And it's not just for the library. It's nicer to just come in. When people are going to take that and then also walk out of the park and go to a bus stop as well. So it's, I mean, I like to give you a look down.
Down where? For the library or for this? They have to go all the way down and down that big hill.
Yeah, I just don't like taking all that red. But also, I do, I would like to have it marked for time, because, like I said, any other time, people stop there and park there. They can park there in a meeting.
Could we, how do we feel about leaving it in the location it is and having it be marked for nine A M. to five P M. or something like that, whatever the bus situation is allowing people who live there to use it overnight, but.
I don't know if it needs overnight, but.
Like, it's like, there's three bus cycles that are going on throughout the day. And so we could just have it be the operating schedule from first to last, but like nine to five is a pretty standard bus schedule. I would assume that the buses are running, correct?
Hmm, I think they might run earlier than that.
Maybe a little bit earlier, maybe a little bit later.
Okay, so like, well, then you're getting to like a seven to seven situation, which but then it's, you have the, that's like, that becomes a street sweeping situation where you're like, get out, get your car out by seven A M.
Yeah.
So red curb does leave it alone.
If, if you'd like, we can come back with a couple of different options for consideration. If you, if you're not ready to come to a decision on this tonight, we can look at the timing of the the stops, alternative location, I mean.
I'm personally comfortable with the red. I think that that's the safest way to enforce and protect the situation versus getting into further staffing issues and like calling and reporting and someone's there at seven A M. And now there's ticketing, whereas a red curb keeps it clean. If others aren't comfortable with that, I understand, but I'm just sharing that I'm okay with this, this strategy.
Can I be a little annoying too? I'm okay with where it is now and with leaving it red for those reasons, especially if it's like a seven to seven thing where it's going to be like super really that they're supposed to move, because I would not want to get up and move my car at seven. But can we like, if they're already coming here anyway, can they make a loop down to the park and up? So like, if it is somebody that's mobily challenged or, you know, differently abled or whatever, that they get a stop in that little circle in the park? Or is that too annoying to ask?
That's a different service. That's the dial, dial a ride service that caters to for accessibility and for seniors and they'll drop them off wherever they want.
Even like a kid in a wheelchair or something?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have that. And the, the difficulty with adding, stopping down there is it would actually be adding another stop, which adds time to the, to the circuit and that we'd need to know that while they're reeval.
Yeah, and they won't generally, even a couple decades ago, when Rearview Park was on the route, the stock was at the top. At Meadowview, they won't go down the cul-de-sac.
That makes sense. Okay, that'll stop being annoying.
I just make, I like the, the different ideas if we have more options than that, also that we know the time. It's going to be ten to three or it's going to be nine to five or whatever.
Check with them approximately what the timeframes would be. As I said, they're still reevaluating what the schedules are going to be right now because of the different stops. So I won't know that for.
I just like it a little less restrictive than that to give seven.
Will this impacts the ability to get the bus cycle going?
Well, it, the fixed route won't be started just yet, but the dial ride is, has already started.
Okay, so the fixed route, because is, are we delaying the fixed route starting because of this?
No.
Okay.
This point, no.
Sounds good. And I guess I'm back with, so we can all be more comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Everyone good with that?
Fine.
Okay. All right. Moving along to presentations. Tonight, we have presentation to Mark Valencia for his service to the city of Beelton. So we have a celebrity in the audience. Thank you for coming here tonight. I don't know, would you like us to shower you with accolades first, or would you like to make remarks before or after that? Okay, well, let's go ahead. We'll just embarrass you first with all of our praise, and then you can come up and say remarks and just say how great we are in return. So that's a great start to it. So I don't know, before we, I, we've worked together for a bit, but I did want to first pause and have our city manager, who's probably engaged with you the most, start off if that's okay, putting you on the hot spot so we can piggyback off of it.
Problem. This has been easy, women's mayor. Uh, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. A presentation tonight is in honor of the retirement or the pending retirement of Lieutenant Mark Valencia, who has been with the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Office for more than thirty years or coming up on thirty years here. He's also been the city of Beelton's lieutenant or the de facto chief of police for coming up on three years now. And I'm very happy that the council has decided to present him to make this presentation this evening. Lieutenant Valencia has been a fantastic chief of police. He has been extremely responsive to Beelton's needs. He has seen problems coming and alerted us to them before they get here. He has helped us find our way through problems that we, we never would have been able to figure out on our own. And he's just been an excellent resource all the way around. All of our residents here in Beelton, I think, owe Lieutenant Valencia a, a, a big thank you for the, the safety that he's provided this community over the past three years and the service that he's provided to Santa Barbara for the last thirty, Santa Barbara County. So I am very proud to say thank you to Lieutenant Valencia this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but this is a great occasion. Congratulations.
Councilmember Hornick.
Take me with you. Uh, you know, thirty years of public service, uh, you know, that's fantastic. And as a, you know, public servant myself, I just want to say that a lot of it is a thankless job. And thirty years of protecting our communities, and I didn't get to work with you that much, but I do know you see, always seem genuine and sincere and to put Beelton's interests first. And I, I think we hold our positions with honor and, and you carry the torch very well. And I want to say thank you for, for your service for that period of time and, and hope you can enjoy your retirement.
Councilmember Sanchez.
I got, thank you again as a friend and somebody who made me feel comfortable and I think made everybody that you're associated with feel comfortable to be around you. And I, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for being part of Beelton and giving your all for us. And again, making us feel safe and proud to be part of the, the city. Appreciate everything you've done for us and I want you to retire. Enjoy your retirement. And, all right.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Okay. Someone let us know like five minutes ago that we were speaking, so forgive me, but I want to start by saying thank you for the city of Beelton. Thank you for, you know, the countless hours and weekends and all the time that you put in for the city of Beelton. But more importantly for me, I want to thank you for being approachable. I want to thank you for approaching things with a very calm demeanor, but never making me feel like you were above me or unable to come to you, even with stupid questions. So I just want to thank you for that approachability and that open communication and feeling like I could just be completely blunt and be like, here, this is what I'm thinking. What do you think? Without having to filter everything and making everything, you know, P C. I just was like, this is what I see. This is what I think. And you allowed me to bring that to you. And, you know, help me through situations both with the city and at the school. So thank you for the way that you led and the way that you serve. So thank you.
I'll start with on the public side of it. I just want to thank you for all you've done for the city of Beelton. You weathered us through coming out of COVID and a very tumultuous time with just what is law enforcement? How do we handle it? With everything taking place. And you always were a steady hand and a guiding force within that. I think that a lot of the reasons why we all as a community weathered that storm was because you were at the helm of that. And I don't think that a lot of people in our community are aware of how special it is when you get someone who is willing to go the extra mile. You were always accessible. You were always communicative. And you were always willing to engage. There was no off the clock for you. And I think that dedication as a public servant is really admirable. And something that we are going to really miss. And I, I look forward to whoever is your replacement, of course, but they're going to be stepping into shoes that are almost impossible to fill because of the, the standard that what your service was to this community into this valley. So thank you from that perspective. As a resident of Beelton, I want to thank you because you were instrumental in handling a lot of the issues that took place with the pride flag burning over in Los Lejos area and kind of providing a safe space for a lot of the queer community. And you were one of the first public officials to kind of come out and reinforce that you're here and that the law enforcement is going to protect everyone in our community. And so that I remember when I first was living here, that it was kind of your reputation preceded you. Beyond me getting involved with politics, it was that you were someone who was here to protect everyone in our community. And the fact that that was traveling through people not engaged as a political level, but just as residents is a testament that not a lot of people know who's in charge of their law enforcement in their community in a small town. But everyone knew that Lieutenant Valencia was here for everybody. And so I think that that impact of making people feel safe is something that you maybe haven't been validated enough on is that it wasn't just in your role, it was you as a person who made yourself available and let you, everyone know you're relating with compassion and you were going to get the job done. And I'd be terrified if you were cuffing me, of course. You were always there to, I think, like what you've done with P H P and how much you wanted to engage the youth of this community. That is going beyond just being law enforcement. That was being a steward of your community. And that investment is what we're benefiting on now. So thank you for creating the culture that you have for engaging and trusting law enforcement. We're very fortunate to have a community that feels safe in law enforcement, and that's because of what you've done. So thank you for all of that. Now your turn. And we'll get the plaque.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for the kind words. Uh, this is a different assignment for me because I came out of operations, which is where I spent the majority of my career doing special operations, which is not politics. But in working with some of the highest dignitaries this the world has side by side and understanding them as people and then their presentation to the world. I, I really got to peek behind the curtain and really the only thing I've learned is that this is our community. I don't, I can't succeed without you and vice versa. They don't, if the community doesn't feel safe. They don't want you in office. It's that simple. And in public service, you also know that you're not known for the good you do, because that's the flow. They just remember when things didn't go right. And I could say these last three years collectively, Scott, you're amazing. This, this, we have worked together and come round and round and not agreed on a lot of things. And we have all not agreed. But what we have agreed on is our community needs to be safe. And our statistics in the last three years have shown that effort. And they are, all of our part one crimes, everything has come down. And traffic, you know, they complain about it every time, but our numbers are through the roof now and our collisions are down. So it is effective and it will continue. The next lieutenant will come and I'll be working with him and doing indoctrination and welcoming him to the world, because he'll be coming out of operations into politics, managing contracts and meeting everybody's needs. But it really just has been a genuine pleasure. I'm, I'm a longtime resident of the valley. But working with Beelton has just been amazing. And it's, it's been seamless. And that's your efforts. I can, and I've also come stomping in his office and he's not going to, it's what you don't know are the three in the morning calls. And I wake him up and tell him something so minor has happened on the way over. I said, apparently, I guess I didn't call him about the one way sign that got ran over. Because I saw that, because I pick up on those things and I would call him even something so simple as a sign, but that protects us a lot. I know our school crosswalks or the guys are all over those and keeping that safe. That was for your efforts just coming down. I need people on it. I didn't know that. And if I don't know it, we can't address it. So that's how I continue, will continue to work regardless if he takes my chair. And if you guys ever need anything, like every one of you does have my cell phone. If you have any questions or problems, I'll be available. I'm not dead. It's just retirement. And I have no idea what's next, but I am looking forward to it. So it's bittersweet, so to speak, because I probably would have done a couple more years, but it just worked out that it, it, once they tell you, we're not going to pay you anymore because you're timed out. It's really time to go. So thank you for the kind words and thank you. I love working with the city. It was my, my genuine pleasure and keep this man employed in your business. We, we had a good one. It was a good run. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a little plaque that we have to present to you and take a group photo. So I hope that you're camera ready. Because if you stay ready, you don't have to get ready. Is this your wife? Would you like to do a photo too? Would you, I mean, you, you, you certainly do the whole thing. There you go. You're the one who's had to deal with the three A M. calls.
Just like, don't get stuck.
Right in the middle here, you take the spot.
All right, one more. Jesus. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. But I'll be attached.
All right. I'm glad you said, don't they go within them.
Hey. And with, oh, we'll wait a second here.
Burning the taste.
All right. And with that, we will move on to public hearings. Do you have any public hearings tonight?
No public hearings this evening.
Okay, moving on to council member comments and items. Councilman Horn just took a drink of water, so we'll start with Councilmember Sanchez.
I had, I had the pleasure of going to Sable Oil Pipeline the other day. I was kind of eyeing it. They're down across the river. And they're putting in special check valves and test valves and water testing line. They're going to pump the water full, like three million gallons of water tested at twelve hundred and fifty pounds. And then they're going to go to the next section, test it again. Move the water to the next section, test it again. So safety wise, I was kind of put it easy. Uh, we go and test water lines in this town at two hundred and fifty pounds and they're going to test this line at twelve hundred and fifty pounds. So uh, I just want they put me at ease and I hope everyone else takes the time to go see the uh, what care they're taking. I think you're doing a good job for what they're doing.
Is that a moment?
Yeah, well, if you roll up, there it is. I just, I should have called you and gone, I don't know, looked at it.
They probably prefer not to have a lot of people down. This is a construction site, so.
But you can go and see what they're doing. And it's pretty interesting. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Hornick.
Um, yes, um, so I know on the agenda, we have potential formation of an ad hoc committee to discuss funding for San Luis Valley Children's Museum, which is a great idea. But I did want to sort of put on everybody's radar the possibility of once again assessing our, our financial situation and maybe prioritizing spend with our ongoing one hotel generation and potential transient occupancy tax generation from that. And two, ongoing operating budget with or without utilization of our contracted for motorcycle deputy. I discussed this with Chanel and Scott earlier in the week. And it might just be prudent to sort of, I don't know if we need a special session or some sort of retreat, but sort of hash out how we see our ongoing budgetary expenses look, understanding that you know, maybe more firmly what are what our budgetary projections look like. Is that vague enough for everybody?
I think that there's been discussion too about like overall a council retreat that could be useful for it or a special session that we could put on like a deep dive into that and an additional meeting. I, I don't know if that's council, we could add a few things with it to beef out the agenda if you want to do a deep dive.
And I know that obviously.
Can we do that for a public meeting?
It has to be.
It has to be.
Me, why don't we do it in public? Let's do it on the agenda.
The, the problem with putting it on the agenda is it our, our agendas usually take our meetings to run about two to three hours piece. Sometimes if it runs a little shorter than that. To put something like this on the agenda that may require a whole lot of discussion, really would probably require two to three hours, maybe just to talk about that, to get the level of detail we'd be looking at. Um, we could. Um, yeah, we could um, we can try doing it in an an agendized meeting, but I think that um taking it i- in into more of a retreat setting where we're doing it at a time other than an agendized meeting, have just one item or maybe two items on the agenda to discuss, nothing necessarily that would require action, just a discussion, almost like a study session. Uh, so that when we came back to a council meeting, you'd at least have an idea as to what the facts are. More so than we'd be able to give you in a five page staff report, ten page staff report, whatever we'd write. Um, and then you might take a half an hour at a public meeting to discuss it. Uh, or at a at a regular city council meeting, any meeting we have will be a public meeting. We will notice it as we do anything else. Uh, but um to have a separate meeting specifically for that might be beneficial, given the level of detail and the complexity of the budget that we're talking about.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, much better said by Scott than me. But yes, essentially that um. Yeah, a deeper dive into the budget. And priorities.
Okay, so we could look into scheduling a retreat for the four of us and agendize it and get it publicly noticed.
I will, uh, I'll start looking at dates and putting up um requests for dates next week and um is the preference an evening meeting, a Saturday morning slash lunch meeting, um, what what would generally the thought be?
I would look to, I would start with the two with children, young children. I don't know.
Yeah, I kind of do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not ideal, but.
Didn't we just have a longer meeting start at five and take a couple of extra hours? It takes some people's state meetings till eleven at night.
They do. They they do. Um, that's up to you. I'm.
But not when you have kids and you have to get up and be at work.
I'm comfortable with this. We can find it. If everyone, I'm comfortable with giving up a Saturday so we could do this if that works better for you guys, just for the sake of kids and work.
Yeah, I could do it either way. I could come at five and stay long or or we'll die, or we could do Saturday.
I mean, I could do both as well. I just think that when you stay like I mean, I feel like when we hit eight, nine.
Yeah, it's a long day.
Like we're checking it. And how much mental clarity and actual thought process are you doing besides spit it out, let's go home. Rather than on a Saturday where you're actually contemplating what's being said. I mean, maybe it's just me, but.
No, that's fine. Let's do Saturday.
Okay. Let's have, if you could socialize that with the four of us to find a Saturday that will work and then we'll go from there.
Will do.
Thank you. That's it.
None.
Um, wanted to thank everyone who attended the uh um town hall we have for District Four and thank you to all the council members here with scheduling our town halls for outreach with everyone. Thank you to Councilmember Hornick, who is doing double duty in that week. So I appreciate that. Um, so just wanted to appreciate you guys for putting in the extra hours. I know that we're adding on a lot. If we just added another meeting to it too. So I just want to thank your efforts in engaging the community and kind of getting the information out there. So just appreciate all your efforts as we move forward with this. So just wanted to send kudos your way. Um, moving along, written conversations, anything of.
We have none this evening.
Great. Committee reports. Councilmember Hornick? Okay, Councilmember Sanchez, you got to see. Could you buy some time for Councilmember Hornick, please, sir?
We had uh two water meetings last week with the um our sustainability boards of the Western Region and then on Monday, and then we had a a combined meeting with three different water boards on Friday. There's a lot attended and we also have an agricultural representative for the first time be part of our board, kind of. Cause they can't vote, but they're on the board. So it was interesting and informative and uh I thought it was a pretty good meeting. Uh, anyway, it's interesting.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Hornick?
Um, no, I don't have any reports. I was just going to say that um there was a scheduled green team meeting today. I regrettably missed that. I would love to be caught up on that. Um, I'm going to send a separate email to the green team about that. Um, I know that uh we tried, I promulgated an email to them all about uh the Thousand Trees Initiative and how we're hoping to see the green team uh take up that mantle and 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 run with it. And I wanted to discuss with them all about the possibility of how that would uh roll out and our upcoming Arbor Day proclamation and hopefully coincide programming. Um, so I will reach out to them and try and catch up uh the public at the next meeting.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
So Mayor Silva and I met with the the executive director, the title, executive director of the Air Pollution Control District. And we just got um kind of an intro on to what the Air Pollution Control District does, what you know, what they can and can't do. And just got up to speed in case I need to attend any meetings as the backup. So good information.
Yeah. And then um I attended the SB CAG sub regional committee and one of the main points of discussion that are taking place right now is that uh Caltrans is creating a preliminary structure in terms of a scoring rubric when evaluating projects. And having kind of a ten, ten categories, ten points ranging from safety to um uh car miles traveled and things like that in this evaluation. But there is a a discordant relationship between the Caltrans state funding metrics and what is viewed as federal dollar priorities. And so in trying to marry federal evaluations with and where the dollars will come from, from the federal government and state priorities and how they aren't exactly aligned right now in terms of where evaluations and criteria should sit. There's a lot of influx right now of how to evaluate projects to receive federal funding dollars through the state conduit of Caltrans. So um it'll be interesting to see how that dance works out, but uh it was a fun time. Loved looking at rubrics. Always always fun to look at rubrics. So uh more to come on that, but we may need to be thoughtful when we're looking for grant funding requests. The audience really will matter in how we frame it. So uh, yeah, that's all we got. Moving on, we will go to business items. And the first one we have is item number nine, review of annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended in June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and our contact for that will be Finance Director Chanel Zamora.
Good evening. Oh, good. Good evening, Mayor Silva and members of the city council. Uh, before you tonight is the presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report, also known as the ACFA. And this is for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, the city is required to produce a basic annual financial report. Uh, but it's been about a little bit more than ten years that the city has been preparing a comprehensive report. Um, and this is to provide counsel, the community more about the city's financial condition. Since its preparation, staff has submitted the ACFA for the GFOA award and has won eleven eleven consecutive awards. Uh, we have submitted the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four ACFA for the award. The ACFA is divided into three different sections, the introduction, financial and the statistical. The introduction, the introduction is more of a background about the city. The financial is the bulk of the report and includes the management and discussion analysis known as the MDNA. The basic financial statements, um, the fund financial statements along with the notes and the independent auditor's report. And the statistical portion presents up to ten years of un-audited statistical information uh in order to gain more of an overview of how the city has been improving or declining over time. The financial statements are prepared with the generally accepted accounting principles as issued by the Government Accounting Standards Board, which is GAAP and GASP. Moss Levy and Hardtime have performed an audit of the financial statements. The auditors express an opinion that the city's financial statements for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four are fairly stated in conformity with GAAP, which is the favorable opinion. To summarize the financial highlights of the report, the city of Buellton is in solid financial position. The increase in overall net position combined with a healthy fund balance provides the city with the flexibility needed to support future investment and meet ongoing obligations. Um, and with that, uh staffer commends that city council review and file the ACFA for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. I am now open to answer any questions and we have our auditor, Adam Geis, here tonight, and he is also available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will go to uh council questions for staff at this time. Anyone have any questions for staff?
Yeah, the um, I think at one time we were talking about how much how much income per citizen. At one time that we were, it was something that we used as a as a yardstick. Uh, and that went like we had most income per citizen, I thought at one time, or at least for the county for sure.
We we had the most sales tax revenue generation on a per capita basis within the county by far. Uh, as far as as overall city revenues per capita, I we have to do calculations. I don't know that off the top of my head. Chanel, are you familiar with that metric?
I don't know it at the top of my head. I would have to do that calculation. But yes, Scott is correct. Uh the report that we've issued before shared is we have the most per capita, sales tax per capita in the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hornick, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. Chanel, I'm sorry I couldn't get this to you before right now. On page ten of the report, just a quick clarification. Uh, the last paragraph, it says public safety total cost of three million five thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars represents about twenty seven point seven percent of total governmental activities expenses. And then uh, two, a sentence, two sentences later, you say or somebody says the single largest single expense category for total net cost of services, public safety with a net cost of two million eight hundred and nineteen thousand, which represents thirty seven point five percent of total net cost. I I guess what am I missing there? What's?
They're two different amounts. The total cost is the total cost we actually paid. And the total net cost is um the expenditure against revenue for that particular program.
Okay. And and so the thirty seven point five percent of total net cost was total net cost of the program?
Yeah, yeah, that includes the uh COPPS grant that we received, which is a hundred thousand plus the COPPS growth for public safety.
Okay.
Which that that's why that amount is lower.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for you, Councilmember? Any questions, Vice Mayor Lewis?
No questions.
Uh, one question I just had is just to kind of, if it's a bit more of a trend line, if you could walk through, I know that we've been waiting for the stabilization of tourism tax dollars coming through, like what we were pre pandemic during pandemic, immediately after post pandemic, where it was like the revenge travel situation and then kind of like, what are we considered now? Um, are we viewing ourselves as stabilized that this is the new normal? Are we comfortable saying that now? Or could you maybe just walk through a bit of how our TOT in particular is stacking up compared to pre pandemic levels to now?
So uh in for TOT, we're above what we were pre COVID. Uh, just slightly, but the past two, three years, it's been stable. So that's kind of been the new normal. Um, so that's why we've been budgeting about three point eight. Last year we received three point nine. Two years ago was four point two million in TOT. So that was post pandemic. So we're kind of seeing this stable tapered off uh revenue stream.
So I see it was like before COVID, it was three point one ish, and now we're kind of saying three point eight might be the new normal, at least that from what we could comfortably forecast type of thing.
Yeah, correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Oh, great. Um, we'll bring it back for discussion and I believe there is a need for a motion to file.
Oh. You receive and file.
Okay, so happy for discuss unless there's just consensus for us to definitely review and file the comprehensive. Yeah. So is there consensus for us to review and file the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four? Everyone comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay, consider it received and filed. I guess we don't need a motion appear. Great. Well, thank you and thank you to those who joined us. I realize.
Stephanie, do you have something?
You're correct. I just wanted to be available if we had any kind of concerns, but no, you're fine. We're just reviewing and filing.
Perfect.
I would like to have a word to thank you for Chanel for her hard work and uh and uh Stephanie, that uh you're you're the best uh uh most comprehensive and your awards every year are a good a good gauge of your uh of your hard work. And I just want to tell you how much we appreciate all your hard work. Doing that.
You're welcome. It is a lot of work, but you know, I try to provide the information as easier as as easy as possible to read because I know financial statements are not easy. Um, and I hope that, you know, every year we can get this financial transparency and everybody gets an idea of what's going on. So, thank you.
For giving us the confidence of being comfortable with your work. So, good job.
And thank you, Mr. Guys, for joining us, even though we didn't have any questions for you tonight. We appreciate you being Zoom present.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. And thank you Chanel for providing all the information that we sort through every year.
Everyone's.
You're welcome.
All right.
She got an award for that.
Well, moving, kudos for all. So moving along, we'll go on to item number ten now. Consider appointment of an ad hoc committee in investigating possible avenues of partnership with the Sanas Valley Children's Museum. And our staff contact for that tonight will be uh City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh members of the city council. As you're aware, um the uh Sanas Valley Children's Museum uh occupies a space um currently at the uh the two O two Dairyland property, the former Willamston property uh on the far west side of the property, opposite the opposite the library from the the dairy barn that's there on the site. Uh, they've occupied this property for a couple of years under a uh what I'm referring to as a temporary license to do so, a very limited license, which allows them to have minimal activity there primarily uh relating to um site preparation and some fundraising activity, that sort of thing. Um, they are currently and have been for the past several years, working toward uh raising funds to complete the uh construction that would be necessary for them to put a facility on that site and open and operate. Um, we have been uh, we, the city have been approached by Ashley Jenkins, the um executive director of the Children's Museum uh with a request to consider some sort of a partnership that would assist the museum in moving toward a position where they might be able to open uh within a reasonable period of time. Uh, it's it's very, the request is very um uh undefined at this point. It's simply a matter of does the city council wish to uh to discuss a partnership with the um uh Children's Museum in whatever form that partnership may want to take through discussions. So the point of this evening's uh item is simply to present this to you uh to um get the city councils a position as to whether or not this type of a partnership uh in whatever form it might take uh would be something that uh would be beneficial to the community and you'd want um the city to pursue. Uh, Ashley Jenkins is here this evening and will, I'm sure, want to speak to you regarding this request. Uh, I am happy to answer any questions I can. Uh, what we're looking for from the city council tonight and what is on our agenda is a request to um uh consider the appointment of an ad hoc committee to discuss the possible avenues of partnership with the Children's Museum. Um, at that point, uh if the council so desires, we will, um, we will need an appointment uh of that committee and then we'll hold a meeting or two and come back to the city council with uh some possible avenues to consider moving forward. Obviously, any type of partnership is likely to have some financial ramifications since we don't know. We don't have any idea of what the scope of this might be. We have no idea what those ramifications might be right now, but the purpose of this committee would be to delve into what avenues might be available and return to the council so you can make uh an informed decision. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I mentioned, um, Mrs. Jenkins is here this evening as well.
Uh, before we bring Ms. Jenkins up, I'm I'm assuming you'd like to speak. Okay, perfect. Um, before Ms. Jenkins comes up, did anyone have questions for staff or would you like to wait for questions until after Ms. Jenkins' uh presentation?
After, please.
Okay, but then the floor is yours, Ms. Jenkins.
Ashley Jenkins, I'm the executive director of clay for the uh Sanas Valley Children's Museum. And we're just here to gauge interest on the council and partnering with us in some fashion. So we're here to just get you on the bus, share our vision tonight and see if uh you see the same amount of value that we do and that the rest of the community is seeing in this project. So Amy's also here. She's our grant writer. She's gonna um have some time to speak as well. I've got a little video I'm going to show you in a second, but first, we just want to express our gratitude. The city of Buellton is growing right now with all these new housing projects with the ramifications. first, we just want to express our gratitude. The city of Bilton is growing right now with all these new housing projects with the ramifications from COVID, with all these people moving out here to, to the boonies, to be with us, to be a part of our community, to get out of where they were. They're seeing something attractive here and they want to be here. And then once they get here, it's our job to make sure there's things to do, make sure that there's value in, in being part of the community for everyone who chooses to be here. So the Children's Museum wants to be a big part of that, and we just want to really recognize how motivated, focused, inspiring uh, that this council has been in uh, and, and Scott and Andrea too, the, the whole team at the city of Bilton in creating this hub at the Williamson property. I don't know what we're calling it officially, but the, the new library property. We've now got the Riverview Park, the Botanic Garden, the uh, library right next to a Children's Museum, maybe some sort of sports fields coming online. It, it's just an incredible hub of services that uh, really big cities all have and cities our size don't always. And, and we're happy to be a part of that. To have a Children's Museum right next to a library is a killer one-two punch for any, you know, families, grandparents, that sort of thing. So we're really glad just to be a part of that. Um, what we're building at the Children's Museum is a hub of community amenities. So we want to take a bunch of stuff that uh, are often spread around, again, mostly larger cities, and we want to bring them all together and serve our residents with that kind of one-stop shop. We want them to be able to come to us and get multiple kind of points of value. So so here's what we're making. We're trying to get kids to play outside. We want to make sure all kids get to play outside. We want them to learn and like what they're doing. We're here not to replace any sort of, you know, schooling, but to be uh, an accent too. And a continuation of what kids are learning in the classroom. For that reason, we are designing this incredible space for kids, kind of zero to ten or so is the age range that the Children's Museum uh, exhibits are designed towards. We've got everything at kind of that kid height, basically, and that could develop mentally. So we've got a mud kitchen, a dinosaur dig, we've got a dirt zone, which is incredibly popular. We have like forty kids there at all times, every time we're open. And all we're doing is giving them shovels and a big pile of dirt. But we're giving kids a yes space where they can touch, they can dig to China, they can make a pile of dirt clods, they can paint a truck. They can come and pick all the flower petals off of our garden, because that's why we're growing them, right? It's not to make like our yard look pretty. It's so that they can put them in their, their little mud pie tins and then serve them to whatever adult is brave enough to like pretend to eat that. I know, I see your face. But it's for the kids. And uh, we also have non-dirty components. We've got a grass hillside. We've got, we're gonna put in a big hillside that goes down the entire hill. We got an architect that put in uh, multiple hillsides in the city of Encinitas um, at public parks and, and private playgrounds. And so we're gonna have this big grass hillside, um, which is a lot softer than concrete that Pismo has. Um, with, you know, a berm and, and all this good stuff. So we're gonna have things that you can do with the kids that you bring that you can do when we have just adults-only nights with no kids, right? We'll have, we'll have like grownups come playtime. Um, we've got a big area that at some point, we're gonna open up a after-school program for kind of the ten to fifteen-year-olds. We're gonna have the fifteen to twenty-year-olds, fifteen to eighteen-year-olds uh, being mentors and volunteers. We have so many spaces for docents, for adults and elders to come uh, be a part of, you know, the kids taking one of those, you know, those geodesic domes that kids, you can hang on. It's kind of like monkey bars. Uh, we'll have one of those, but we're gonna have materials like um, not live materials, but like, you know, sticks and sort of things, and also uh, different pieces of material, and the kids will get to weave that together and turn it into a fort. So it'll be, you know, artsy, it'll be proprioception, which is like the balance-y stuff. That'll be large muscle stuff for the kids that want to roll down the hills. It'll be tiny, fine motor skills that they get to work on as they work in the mud kitchen, work with our steam zone um, that has, you know, tiny little robots that they get to direct through mazes and things like that. So we're really looking to serve all the ages, including the senior centers that we've already had discussions and partnerships with. We're looking to serve groups that are low-income, the yardless is kind of the term we've come up with, is all the people that live in apartments, townhomes, the ones that can't dig, can't paint a truck. You're like, I know I should craft with my kid, but I, I personally like, really don't like giving my kids paint, right? But they can have it here at the museum. So we're just trying to provide a space um, as well as, yeah, just community amenities such as an after-school program, summer camps uh, as well as uh, school programs coming in during the school day, supplementing, foxing with their kind of common core standards. So that's what we're looking to provide. We just want to provide opportunities for kids to get outside, be in nature for the kids who, you know, don't, their parents don't have time to hike them up Midland Trails. They don't have um, maybe the ability to take them to Riverview because it's not fenced in, and they might have a bolter, a kid that's bolting. Or you come in, you've got three kids, four kids, five kids, and they're all different ages, and they all want to do different stuff. So once you walk through our gates, our, our whole area is uh, contained, but expansive. And there's different things for different kids to do. So you walk in with your five kids and the two-year-old, you know, goes straight to the mud kitchen, and the ten-year-old is like um, trying to throw mud clods, you know, but, but they won't because you'll catch them. The, you know, the five-year-old is over at the water feature, working with a fifteen-year-old, making a dam uh, for our waterway. Um, our water feature is gonna start with kind of, we're calling it the Thunder Dome uh, where it's gonna thunder and lightning and sprinkle down water every half an hour or so with the thunder sound. So kids uh, get to experience storms other than just today and this week when it rains. You'll get water all year round. It'll go into our waterway that looks like the Saniness Riverbed. It'll end in this giant splash pad that has animal paw prints coming up to it. So it's not just the water play, which is already fun. It's not just that it's connecting to, you know, nature with the uh, with the waterway reflecting our riverbed, with the animal footprints being animals that are local, and they could do the identification, but it's also the kids just get a yes, jump in that fountain. You can't even jump in the fountain in solving anymore because they filled it with dirt. So a little more made, you know, surrounded by roses. So we're just giving them spaces where we can say, yes. I'd love to show you a little video. Should be under a minute. Thanks for figuring out Zoom for us. Appreciate it.
Uh, one more. Yeah, this and.
Thanks for your patience. Appreciate it. It'll be worth it.
Are you like the Boston children? Santa Barbara and gives you enough room to come with the day and just excited for another place where the kids can be able to play outside and thank you so much.
So what we're looking to create is more of that. Uh, we use this clip on purpose because we filmed it during our last mosaic day. We call them our discovery days, which is uh, free opportunities for kids to come out and play and usually make an art project. It was funded in partnership with the uh, Bilton Arts and Culture Council. So again, we're so grateful for the support we've gotten from the city already. We're so grateful for all of you that come out and drop pianos off on my front porch and, you know, at seven o'clock on a Saturday that my husband has to haul over to the museum. But that piano has been played with by hundreds of kids now. And we're gonna put, you know, a little plexiglass thing in front of it so they can watch themselves play, and they get to um, have that next level of kind of sensory curiosity, exploration. Um, that's, that's what we're here to do. So we're the city to choose to partner with us, where we'd be putting resources, uh, what we would be putting resources into for the next five years or so, is this year, we're building. Everything that we get is gonna go into building our exhibits. We've got nine exhibits planned, uh, fully planned, ready-to-go architects, builders lined up, ready to pull the trigger. Um, and those, again, are kind of for the zero to ten-year-old age. So we're just building and getting open. We can't, we can serve hundreds of kids at a time by doing our free days, which we're doing once a month all throughout this year. So we just, you know, even though we're not open, we're like, what can we do? And so we're doing once a month, free days, um, at the museum, calling them our playdays. It's the second Saturday of every month. So we're gonna continue to do that, but once we're open, we get to serve thousands. We get to have the school groups come in. From, you know, Oak Valley gets to come in, every single kid in every single class will get to come over because we're building local, we're building this close so that they don't have to pay for buses and rent buses, you know? Um, Mr. Miguel in his Superman shirt can just pop over in between, you know, drop off and pick up and that sort of thing and, and bring them over. So we're gonna be able to serve so many students, so many families uh, once we're open, and that's what we're asking for help with. So, again, back to resources. Year one, building. So just building, getting open by the end of this year. In whatever capacity that looks like, we're committed to opening at the end of this year. And the city uh, partnering with the city, having some sort of alliance with the city is gonna be a huge part in making that happen. Um, we've really run out of runway on getting funding on our own before we open. And, and we're definitely looking forward to that part where we're open and we have that proof of concept. Where it's not just one day that people get to see us, but every day donors are gonna be able to come and experience uh, the museum, and I think that's when we see them light up. They get it when they see it, and they, they sit there relaxing and kind of confused and wondering what they should do because their kids have been playing happily for two hours and haven't needed them once. Like, it is magical. So year one, we are building. Year two, we'll launch our summer camp programs and probably our winter and spring camps. Um, those are a service that the city needs desperately. Just, you know, any sort of access of places to have kids be while schools closed, we're happy to bridge that gap. So that's year two is what we'll launch. Year three, we'll definitely have our after-school uh, program up and running. So now we'll have summer camps, daytime school programs, and after-school program launched. We're also doing a youth residency that I can, um, youth artist residency that I can talk about more if you want to hear about it. So that's kind of year three. Year four, we're making sure we are have such a solid foundation that all of our programs can run smoothly together so that we're serving all those different kind of constituencies in, within the community. And year five is let's plateau, like let's, let's maintain all the things that we're doing and see where we need to pivot and turn to see what the community wants. If the after-school program turns out to be the biggest need, then we put more resources into that. If it's the summer camps, we put more resources into that. If it's school programs, we put more resources into that. So I'm envisioning that fifth year being um, asking for, you know, the partnership to continue through at least those five years, if not longer, um, so that we can, again, make this a long-term viable, long-lasting resource for the community. Uh, I want all of us to be at our fiftieth, you know, grand, you know, celebration of fifty years with our little canes and our little, you know, walkers and stuff. Uh, that's, that's the kind of service we want to provide for the community is we, we want to be here fifty years from now and, and take all of you with us. So um, that's what I have. I've got a little handout for each of us. Kind of going over what values we bring to the community, kind of the amenities that I was talking about. And then also what age ranges each of those hit and how we're specifically um, helping each of those age, age ranges. And then Amy was gonna come up and give a few comments from kind of a parent standpoint.
That's like that.
Yeah, do you want me to?
Oh.
Okay. Cool. I want you to, yeah, well, sure. Yeah, um, from kind of a parent perspective, as well as someone who's involved with the museum.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Amy Young. I've been here in Bilton um, five and a half, almost six years now. And I'm mom, a stay-at-home mom um, of three kids and number four on the way. Um, and I've been working with the Children's Museum about two years now, grant writer, part-time grant writer and uh, volunteer. Um, and what excites me about the S, uh, the S Y V Children's Museum is a little bit of what Ashley was saying of how we have a lot of natural beautiful resources in this area, lots of cool things to explore and learn. But they're very separate. It's a long drive. You gotta pack up your kid. You gotta persuade all the kids to agree on one place to go. You gotta pack them up. You gotta drive. You gotta go and spend time. You have to have that time. We are blessed as our family to have a stay-at-home mom who can take them out in the middle of the day, on any day of the week, to do some adventure or some exploration or go to museum. And to have the financial resources to, to pay for the zoo or pay for the Santa Barbara um, Natural History Museum or Moxy or other things. So um, I know not everybody has that, and I think bringing that together, bringing together the natural resources that we have, water plague with sand, rocks, uh, leaves and sticks and um, all the things that my family loves to do is uh, or a big draw for our family is to go down to the river. And it's kind of unsanctioned, unclear who owns it and if which parts we're supposed to be at at various times, but we have a couple of favorite spots that we like to go to. And we love it. My kids, the young, the young boys can go and build bridges out of sticks. They can throw rocks in the water. Uh, my eleven-year-old daughter loves to bring her pocket knife along and carve things. Um, and she's kind of a budding herbalist, so she likes to explore uh, the, the weeds and the bushes and see what's out there and um, and so kind of bringing that together for people, bringing resources like that together for families who don't have the chance to just go and hang out by the river or who are more shy and scared about it with legitimate reasons. There's sometimes interesting trash found by the river. Um, and so bringing that to a safe space, so people with little toddlers that are runners or old and older kids can, can engage with their senses, get, you know, have a wide variety of um, age-appropriate activities for them and, and that gauge their interest as well. Um, is a huge resource and something that I don't see in Bilton unless I go off the beaten path, off the beaten trail, where it's a little bit, a little bit less safe. Um, and I know a lot of, and I know from the fact that no one else is there, except for maybe Ashley with her boys, that a lot of people aren't doing that. They aren't getting those opportunities. Um, even small things like digging. My kids want to dig a hole. If they dig it in our yard, we trip because it's in the path. Or it's in our garden where we're trying to plant a tree or our, our vegetable garden. And so we find ourselves saying, no, kids, no, you can't just dig a hole. Um, and maybe that's just our personal style and we could, we could work on that. Or we could take them to the Children's Museum, and there's this giant dirt pile with all the tools and all the things that they want to do. And they have friends there, and they have other kids doing new things that they can kind of expand their creativity and explore new ideas. Um, so I think um, we're grateful for everything that you guys do to serve our community and all the support you've given to the museum so far has been huge and made all the, made, made it so other people can come in and help us as well. Knowing that we have, we're secure with a lease and land and this beautiful property has made it so much so easy to, to ask for more help from outsiders. So we thank you for that. And also thank you for bringing the library to my neighborhood. We've been six hundred times since they've opened. Um, so yeah, anything you can do to support the museum, we would love and appreciate so much.
Thank you.
And we'd love to just kind of open up to any questions you have about what value we bring to the community, what amenities uh, a lot of other cities uh, provide for their constituents that, that we're planning on bringing and, and offering and really I mean, I hate to oversell what we're doing, but like, this is a steal. Whatever you contribute to it, like, we have everything planned out. We're gonna staff it. We're gonna run it. We're gonna be here for thirty years and, and then be planning for the next thirty. So we're just, we're, we're happy to provide this for the community. And we need some help to make it happen. So we're really looking forward to partnering with you in some way. But what questions can I answer?
You know, you want to start, Councilmember Central?
Go ahead.
That's our, no questions? Councilmember Central, we're back to you.
Yeah, um, what is it? What is the cost gonna be if some, like, I know we go to the Moxy museums, like fifteen bucks a kid to go in there. And I know if we go to the zoo, it's, I don't even know, because I'm on them, I got that. You know, we uh, got the annual thing. And also, would you, would you have an annual pass for some kids, or, but if somebody shows up? Are they gonna be charged by the day, by the hour?
Ooh, by the hour. I like that. Yeah, no, good, really good question. No, thank you.
Maybe you had a baby, we had just, you know. Maybe send a babysitter there with the kids. Yeah. Pay them by the end.
Yeah, that's right. You have to pay the babysitter and the fees. Um, not to get too nitty-gritty into any budget stuff at all, but I think it's a fair question to answer kind of what our, our, our per-person cost would be. Is that appropriate? Great. So we've looked at a couple different pricing models. Uh, our admissions and our annual memberships will be a big part of our lasting revenue that's gonna help us be fiscally uh, responsible and and add to our longevity. So we're definitely planning on charging at this point. If we got uh, if the city of Bilton wanted to kick in an exorbitant amount, we could go free. We're happy to do that. We don't, we don't care where the money's coming from. We want to provide the services. Right now, the plan is to charge uh, something very reasonable for a uh, annual membership, so on par with or less than what a lot of the other local museums are doing. Our per-person cost would be around ten dollars per person. We've priced out eight, we've priced out ten, we've priced out twelve. So we're in that range. It's less than the Moxy. Um, we've also looked into, um, is it going to be uh, a different cost for city of Bilton residents? So what if locals have a different rate? You know, something lower, half-price, something like that. And then, of course, when we work with school groups, um, and any low-income groups, um, we'll be doing five dollars per person. So if we're doing ten, we're doing five. If we're doing eight, we're doing four. So we'll have half-price for um, veterans, for school groups, that sort of thing, because we want them there. We just, we just want their bodies outside playing. Um, another thing we're gonna be doing is we've got uh, kind of partnerships pre-set up with uh, the senior center. So any seniors that come to help, you know, that are volunteering, we'll be able to get in free. Um, anybody who is a part of uh, WIC, Women, Infant and Children, anybody who is part of uh, CASA, anybody who's a foster family. So we're working with a couple of community organizations. So we're working with a couple of community organizations to just have free passes um for all of those groups. Because again, that's who we're looking to serve is the people who don't have a backyard. I I live on, you know, over by Honida, I have this beautiful backyard. My kids do dig moon holes in. Um, but I did snap five tendons off my bone um walking through my own yard. So we're trying to provide that place where people can uh can come. And so we're trying to draw them with those lower rates, if that makes sense. But does that kind of answer some questions about about how much it would be per person?
Because speaking of that, the, what kind of liability insurance would, would you have to? That sounds like an expensive part of your operations now.
Yeah, that's a really great question. Right now, we're on kind of a hybrid insurance where it's a pretty low and reasonable rate because we're not open yet. You know, and the insurance company was very aware of like
Sign a waiver for the kids or some
Yeah, and and we don't even, um, we have our volunteers sign waivers at this point. We don't have the kids sign waivers because we're just doing one off events. The parents are with them all the time, that sort of thing. Um, we will definitely have waivers um when we open and that'll be something people can sign ahead of time, that sort of thing. But our, our insurance has been so reasonable so far. And again, because we are an outdoor museum, um, we're in a really unique category where the insurance is really not very cost prohibitive. Because we're basically someone's backyard. We're basically an outdoor garden. We're kind of like the Bilton Community Garden, right? We're kind of like having uh parts of a playground. We're kind of like having the botanical garden, right? We're just bringing all those together. We're actually the only outdoor museum in uh in all of California. That's an all outdoor museum. Um, it's really unique. There's some, there's some museums that are kind of like ours in New York um that do all adventure play, loose parts play. They actually don't allow adults in. Only children can go into the playground um and they have hammers and they have nails and they are building three story structures. Um, things like that. It's, it's really, there's a lot we can be doing to serve people. But the way we're doing it is very well thought out to minimize the risk. For example, for our water feature, when I say splash pad, it's one inch of water, right? We're not, there's no swimming things. We're going to do a gray water system. We're not recirculating and treating stuff. So because of how we're building our exhibits and because of how easy to please kids are, um, our insurance really isn't that bad. And again, we don't have, we're, we're not building a zipline. I'm not building a waterslide. You know, those are, those are things that drive it up. The kids wanted watersides. We surveyed five hundred students at um Oak Valley. And what they asked for was slides, swings and a waterside. So we'll do at least two of those. But yeah, great questions. What else can I answer?
Counselor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sanchez, just, just the information of yourself and the, and the council. Um, the insurance that they provide will be, will, will need to be as a condition of any license that the city would grant them would need to meet the requirements of the city's insurance carrier as well. Wouldn't necessarily be, it wouldn't be provided by the city's insurance carrier, but it would need to meet their requirements. So we'll, we'll have the uh indemnification issue covered.
And our, our insurance provider is more than happy to make that happen.
Yes, Mayor Lewis, any questions?
No questions, just super excited to see it come to fruition. My kids love it.
Uh, the only question I had is, I know there's timing of everything. And um, I think that historically, Bilton has had a struggle with uh finishing a project in a, in a timely manner in terms of the community and like that runway. So if funding was not a problem, or if, you know, if you could wave your magic wand and you're rated cash checks and go. When would you be able to actually open the children's museum? Like what it would be the gold time, goal, goal timeline for that?
Great question. So again, we're talking a couple of phases. So museum being open, separate from the extra add on programming being open, right? That's why I kind of went over here's in the next five years, here's how we're rolling these out. Um, if I could cash a check tomorrow, we'd be open October first. We're, we're ready. We have everything designed. We only have five exhibits left to do. One of them's a big one. Two of them are big ones. We have a fountain and a hillside. Um, and then two of them, we have all the supplies sitting in our shipping container, just ready to go. We've got our steam lab, you know, this close to being open. We're, we're really pursuing this in a multi pronged attack. I don't have a better word for it, but we're negotiating the lease terms with Scott and um the city's uh council. We are working on the conditional use permit with Andrea. And we're working on developing our exhibits and then getting funding as well. So we're kind of doing all three of those at the same time, so that as all of those move forward, we're just ready to build. So what I can commit to, because I don't, I, I think we'd probably come back before council if we were invited, maybe in a month or so, probably not the next meeting, maybe the one after, that, that gives us kind of a, a month um uh of, of runway. So kind of with that, that month being taken up, I can't promise October first, right? This is if I got a check tomorrow. Um, but we are looking at by the end of fall. So by the end of the year, we want to be open. What we'd really like to do is to be open by, you know, September, October, November, so that we can start getting school groups out um before, before they get out for kind of winter break. So that's, that's what we'd like to do.
And then the only other question I have is that, um, I'm assuming with this too, it's the goal is there's, your revenue stream goal will be a mix between ticket sales and admission, but also private philanthropy and donations from that. So I, I know you have a grant writer and things of that sort. And so thank you for, grant writing is a pain. So thank you for what you do. But I mean, but the uh other one will be to utilize the open museum as a leveraging tool for private philanthropy. Is that kind of the plan for the next five years?
Absolutely. Right now, um, we're a teensy bit unhappy with our funding position because we have an amazing grant writer. Her grant success rate is around eighty percent. Most, um, yeah, I know, right? Uh, it's incredible. Most organizations, you know, have around fifteen to thirty or so. So we're, we're really grant heavy. The good news is we're getting grants. Um, the bad news is we really want it to be more sustainable, more predictable revenue streams um to, to give us that solid foundation. So we are pursuing private partnerships. We are pursuing grants. Uh, we are getting, you know, doing fundraisers, that sort of thing. I think um when you say leverage, that brings to mind two things. Uh, one example is uh community groups or, you know, private donor groups want to see that this is really going to happen before they donate big. So uh, we've been, you know, in partnership with Santa Ana Valley Foundation, Santa Barbara Foundation, all the local Rotary Clubs, every single one of them. Uh, SYV Youth Rec, uh, so many local organizations that are um consistent givers. Uh, but none of them are able to give to the capacity that will get this built. Uh, we also have like SYV Youth Rec, we approached them for a twenty five thousand dollar grant to help build our fence on the upper lot. They are thrilled to do that, but they're only going to do that once we sign the lease. They, I think, fair or not, have been burned in the past, hearing about things coming to Bilton and then having them not happen over time. And and we're at a really crucial spot, which is why we're here before you, asking to partner in some way. Because uh we're, we're out of runway. We've tapped out, we've tapped into all the donor fields we can right now before being open. And once we're open, not only will we be able to leverage the opening, use kids, weaponize kids against the donors, right? And then bring them in front of the cute kids and they go, oh, I do want more of this, right? So absolutely to the private donors, um, that'll be an ever increasing piece of our revenue stream. Um, but also leveraging uh a robust partnership with the city. Uh, if we're getting city funding, then people know it's happening. People know it's that now there's this confidence even for um private donors. So I think getting uh some sort of funding, some sort of partnership with the city of Bilton. Also, that's a big leverage point that a lot of donors want to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions at this time before we just start the discussion? Okay, well, thank you very much for all the information. So um before we move to council discussion, do you have any public comment? Sounds good. Okay, we'll bring you back for discussion. So um, Councilmember Horneck, anything?
Oh, thanks, I'll be just discussing to formulate the ad hoc committee, right?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Um, well, I could, I might, I was just jotting down all the fun stuff that's happening and all the the uh prospective things and exciting new things happening. There's so much to be had here and um and everybody wants something for the kids. Everybody wants something for the, you know, high school kids too. And I think that there'll be kids, you know, older kids going over there to help out. And uh, older kids have younger siblings and it'd just be exciting to see someplace like the Moxie Museum or the, you know, the zoo or something as an attraction in Bilton. So uh, I just think that, that the, the uh assets in the, with the community are real high. And I just think we should have our, an ad hoc committee here, uh, get something rolling with the city. Maybe.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Just question, how many people do you need for the ad hoc committee or how does that exactly even work?
So an ad hoc committee of the city council can only consist of two members of the city council. Because uh any more than that would constitute a quorum of the council and therefore need to be a noticed agendized public uh city council meeting. So it would be a two member council.
And then
Or committee, pardon me.
I'm assuming that the ad hoc committee might be best served by those with the most questions.
Uh, I'll, I'll leave that to the council to hash out.
Been ready to go.
Yeah.
You know? I don't need.
I, I think the ultimate question comes down to like the financing and how we finance and what that looks like. Uh, I mean, and that's what the committee is about, right? And I think everybody here seems to be
Be discussed with Scott to be part of that discussion.
Yeah. Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll be involved in coordinating the, the activities with the committee, but
That kind of spurred the idea of the special meeting that I mentioned in, you know, council member comments. Because, you know, I think we're gonna need to kind of get a handle on what we got going on and then what we, to see what we can contribute. Um, so that's all. Um, I hope that we have this special meeting soon.
Yeah, um, I think for, it sounds like we're all circling around the same kind of sentiment here. So that's refreshing that it's, that we're all feeling that. I think that for all four of us, we have been kind of given a mandate by everyone that an investment in children activities is kind of critical. I feel like all of us have heard multiple discussions about a movie theater, a bowling alley, something to show for the kids. And I think that this is for once a chance for the council to actually invest in something and have an opportunity to do that. That is not something viable from a private sector option. So this is, I really think, thank you for providing a solution to a problem we've all had at some point of needing to invest in that. So and um I ran into Kathy Rielan at one point and even just talking about the tourism benefit. I think that there's a lot of different angles that we can look at this. Bilton's kind of becoming the hub for where families stay when they come to the valley. And so I feel like there's a lot of different angles to look at it and it's a benefit to the community. But there's also a financial benefit that we can explore even further and how we can leverage that and become the hub where when you go wine tasting, you're staying in Bilton because there's a children's museum that can let your kids burn off energy while you're burning off the alcohol from the bay prior. So it sounds like a good win win. Um, and I'm glad people like dirt. I don't, but I'm glad kids, apparently kids dig a lot. Who knew? Oh, thank goodness. I'd like a good vacuum sealed area, please. Um, so anyway, so it sounds like we need to, it sounds like we're all good with forming an ad hoc committee. And it sounds like if there's willingness by the council to move swiftly on this at the fact that we all have a commitment of understanding our finances, establishing finances for this. And with the runway that we've just been discussed, it sound, it would behoove us to try and have this resolved before the end of April from a funding perspective of making decisions if we're comfortable with that aggressive of a timeline. Because trying to match up with what was just presented, are we okay with trying to make all that happen? Everyone ready to caffeinate aggressively?
No, that sounds great.
I think, I think the councilman with children should be on the
Do a midday meeting, I will be.
So we need a Saturday meeting, I will be. We need to have two people on this committee. And to a, a council member Lewis's point, she's feeling good. So um, but I guess is anyone particularly?
Yeah, my suggestion was like, since you have a lot of questions about the financing and how we could make it sustainable and work. I, I feel like it would be a good thing for you to be on the ad hoc.
Not a chance. I nominated David Silver as Don Sanchez. I didn't talk about this. I'm, I'm good. I, I'm happy to have a special meeting and talk about it and have it.
No, I totally get it. I totally get it, but.
Is it possible to do an ad hoc via Zoom so people aren't
You want to join, you go ahead. Ad hoc meetings via Zoom, that's fine.
I, I talked to Ashley. I talked to Ashley. Yeah.
Okay. Well, you want to do another ad hoc committee together, Councilmember Sanchez?
I was, I was, you two, the, the mayor and the vice mayor would be on the ad hoc.
Establish it. It sounds like the one who's never had kids is on the children's museum ad hoc committee. And I hope that I pick good things for everyone, but
Number between one and ten?
The ad hoc committee though is about discussion financing options.
Yeah, I understand. I'm being facetious. I'm just, I feel, I find a high value with this. So I'm happy to be part of this ad hoc committee. I'm happy to be on another ad hoc.
Stupid question, sorry for interrupting, but why do we need an ad hoc committee? We all want to do it. We all think it's great. The only option here is, or not option, question is the finances. If that could be drilled down in our Saturday meeting, why go through the redwood of having an additional ad hoc? Because we don't need convincing.
No, you don't need convincing. It doesn't sound like the council needs convincing that there is a, that there is a, a potential avenue for partnership.
Right.
Um, much like a discussion of the finances. Um, the, the, the investigation of these different avenues, uh, potential avenues of partnership could take longer than you're likely going to want to spend in, in, in a, in a regular city council meeting. That's all. If you, if you want to go that route, we can certainly do that. But this
Our Saturday meeting. Oh, like make it one in depth.
We could make it part of the Saturday meeting, absolutely.
What do you guys think?
That's a good idea.
No?
Let us have a Saturday meeting first. We have a lot to talk about. I mean, there's a lot of different ongoing operating costs, uh, expenses coming up, budgetary line items. Uh, I think we should have that meeting, prioritize what we're looking at and then turn our attentions toward what our priorities have been and what our mission statement is going to be.
I'm gonna ask, I agree with you, but I think we have to do this concurrently to make it happen. I think that if we, I'm, I'm going with the Saturday meeting to talk through the finances. But I think that it would behoove this ad hoc committee to come to that Saturday meeting with a comprehensive understanding to discuss also what we're looking at in possible funding for in partnership with this. I think that, I think if we wait to do that Saturday meeting and then the ad hoc meeting and then the agendizing of it, we're running up into the end of April, maybe not attainable at that point. We may have to be able to do both at the same time.
I disagree. Um, I, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I get that.
I'm just trying to think of scheduling.
No, no, I know. It's scheduling priority, but end of April and respectfully, Ashley, jump in here. But um, you're set to open right now, end of year without additional funding, correct? No.
We are, funding wise, we've, as we've gotten money, we've built things with it. So our coffers are always low for a reason, because we are using everything that we get. So we are going to open in some capacity. So without any help from you, that's looking like four exhibits, no fence. And that's kind of what we're able to offer right now. So we'll still open. We still want to, you know, cert classes, but we're not a useful asset. We're, we're really not an amenity for the city at that point. Um, we do need to partner with the city of Bilton in order to open at full capacity. So developing all nine exhibits, having a fence around it.
Right.
Being ready to go. So um, I would say it's, it's necessary to partner with the city in order to open at, at full capacity and, and all those amenities that I mentioned, that sounds so wonderful, that, that happens with your help. Um, but we do have a lot of numbers crunched and different kind of uh options uh already ready that we could submit pretty quickly um to help with that ad hoc committee, just showing you here's some different options of how you might want to partner with us um without locking you into anything.
So just to give, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Um, but you, it sounds like they would be open in some capacity at the end of the year.
It's some capacity, we're just, yes, organization are committed to doing that. However, we are, we're out of runway.
Got it.
To do it without any further help. Yeah.
So I understand the desired timeline, but I think it's important for us to get our budgetary priorities set for our city first and then turn our attention toward our initiatives that we discuss at the special session meeting. Can I, I think I did all, yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I hate to ask a sense of urgency, but I'm trying to read through Rosie disposition.
Okay, great. So we've got about two more months uh where we can pay our staff. I've already laid myself off like three times in the last two years, um, because I like all of our money going towards programs. Um, right now I've managed to tweak things so that our staff are able to still, and everyone's part um, that our staff are still able to be paid uninterrupted because staffing is progress, right? Our staff are the ones who are making all this, writing the grants. You don't get the grants without paying. Um, and it's unfair to, to ask Amy, who's already growing a whole league, um, to write grants for free. That's, that's not something uh everyone can do. So we've got two months of expenses before we need to pause, hit the pause button. And something we're trying to avoid is being another bowling alley, being, you know, the, the, what's it called? The movie theater, you know, like we don't want to have promised that we're going to come and not make it happen. So when I say we're going to open at the end of the year, that's because we want to fulfill that promise, not because we have. So we'll, we'll find a way to do something um for kids, but it's, it's not going to be big and it's not going to be impressive without this partnership.
I think it's fully attainable for us to do it concurrently. I think you
I think you can't really discuss priorities without discussing how this fits into that. Like I think we could make it happen.
That's. That's fine. If you guys want to do a special session, but I think. That you are discounting the amount of things that we have to talk about, but that if you guys want to do it, I'm just one vote here.
My point was the ad hoc committee will be able to make a presentation at the, at the other meeting with some numbers. So we'll have a. An idea of how much for class, you know, for fulfill almost. You know, and what kind of partnership we're going to do. There's going to be some of it, maybe. Less fees or less. You know, some of the city cannot charge, like not charge for water, not charge for something. I don't know. That's what the ad hoc committee is.
We can certainly investigate options. We do, we don't want to get into that tonight.
The ad hoc committee would do. And have some information when we got to our meeting.
So we'll have a special meeting discussing budgetary priorities. Mission statement for the future. And then we'll have a, an ad hoc committee that meets separately to discuss these things. Or we'll have a presentation of the ad hoc committee at the special meeting. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
I think, I, I feel like.
You'll have more.
That would be ideal.
If we are on the ad hoc committee, which it sounds like we're running out of people to be on this ad hoc committee. So I think, well, I need to say, let's just say it's you and me. Let's say we were on the ad hoc committee. We would, we should to truncate this, come to the special session meeting with a. Here's the numbers. Here's what we're thinking. We've met with Chanel. We've talked about the impact of this. How does that fit into the overarching thing? And I think come with a, not come with it to be like, if we are setting our priorities. We also are equipped to provide all the information to establish this as a priority, one way or the other. But that way it's kind of like, we know this funding situation is coming and how does this fit into this meeting's discussion? And this doesn't have to be concrete, but I feel like you need to have some kind of boundaries of what it is already.
You have to have some idea.
Yeah.
I, I think Ashley has presented some of that, hasn't she? Or is that just me?
Uh, no, I haven't. We haven't. Let's see. This isn't a budget meeting, so.
Your mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to redirect kind of the conversation. I know that a lot of this has to do with finances and wanting to make sure that. You know, it is a part of a budgetary consideration overall for the city. Um, but I didn't want the item to just solely focus on finances. If we could just kind of hover back to whether you would like an ad hoc committee. Just because that was what was presented on the agenda, I would appreciate it.
Thank you for the polite, the gentle parenting to get back on the rails. I appreciate. It sounds like at this point, regardless of these, we are comfortable with making an ad hoc committee.
Sure.
And so we need to form two people onto the ad hoc committee. And it sounds like to get to that, I will be one of those people and I'm not sure who the second one is, but I'm happy to see who else would like to be on it.
Fine to do it unless you have a ton of questions and would feel better. Cause I feel like you're going to get to the finance thing and you're going to have seven million questions that you could have already answered. That's the only.
No, no, no. I would feel like I could contact Ashley directly about that.
That's fine, but I will be the second.
Will serve on the ad hoc committee for the Sanas Valley Children's Museum. We will meet and we will. I hope everyone's schedule is quite available because we're going to be meeting a lot and we'll need to move quickly with it. But I think if we can. Try and make sure that for us to be prepared to present from the ad hoc committee at the future. Retreat conversation and we'll leave it there. That's our goal as an ad hoc committee with nothing else committed. We'll just be prepared as an ad hoc committee to present at that time.
Can we, can I just make the request for work purposes? If possible, can we do Zoom?
Yes.
If, okay, because it just makes it easier for me to fit it in the day.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Great. So we're all set. I love that. That we really buried the sale in that one. I just, yeah, it sounds like one in ad hoc committee. So thank you very much for coming and presenting tonight. Thank you for all of your work on this and we look forward to chatting with you soon. All right.
Thanks, guys.
And thank you to council for getting us back on, on track. I appreciate that.
We'll behave from now on, I promise.
Oh, no guarantees. But now moving on to item number 11, authorization of contract amendment. Thank you very much. We'll do public advice. Bye, everyone. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item 11, authorization of contract amendment with KOA for the Caltrans traffic study. And our staff contact will be Public Works Director Rose Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. Last year, council approved a contract amendment with KOA to. Prepare the concept plans, initiate discussions with Caltrans regarding our skinny two forty six projects. So over the past year, that's what KOA has been doing. They've prepared two different concept alternatives. Um, one that is a one lane in each direction and reduced widths. Um, and then the other is the maintenance of two lanes in each directions with reduced lane widths. And then with similar bike and pedestrian safety features as well. Um, they've been coordinating with Caltrans. We went through several rounds of comments as far as what. How trans would like to see, um, and this amendment. Includes the additional scope of work and all the various studies Caltrans wants to see. Including different design requirements. Turning movement requirements, traffic counts, pedestrian counts, et cetera. Um, that they're going to require in order to review these different concepts and see which ones they are willing. To be approved with us and we can move forward with a design and encroachment permit process. Um, so with that, we've got this contract amendment. Attachment one is the scope of work. That outlines all the different studies and requirements that Caltrans wants to see in review. Um, and the total amount for this contract amendment is eighty one thousand five hundred dollars. So with this request, we're. Requesting that council also complete a budget adjustment to increase CIP oh nine two, three oh nine, dot seven. Zero, 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 from the existing thirty nine thousand, seven hundred fifty two. Dollars to a hundred and twenty one and seventy two dollars to complete the budget amendment to include the scope of work. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Horne?
Do they have a projected timeframe for when they might?
We are hoping to get draft studies to us in two to three months. Um, and they'll resubmit to Caltrans at that time. They've still. We've asked them to keep going to kind of keep the momentum going right now. Um, I, I. There has been additional emails, so hopefully we can try to accelerate that, but the timeframe proposed about two to three months to get that going.
Two to three months to get.
To get, sorry, resubmittals of the, the studies to Caltrans. And then there'll still be an exchange of comments and.
Once it goes to Caltrans, um, all bets are off with regard to timing. We, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll take their time. And, and Rose, correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, I was a little encouraged by this latest. Scope of work because Caltrans is asking for a draft design standards decision document. Which kind of tells me that if, if the numbers are going the right way in the studies, they may be prepared to make a decision and that this is not necessarily. One in a series of twenty different submittals they're going to ask for.
Hopefully, but that also, that document can also mean if there is. Deviations from design in order to meet our needs and requirements. That documents also use for that to help justify that. That doesn't necessarily mean that they'll approve it, but it's, it helps document. That thought process.
Um, another question was just, uh, apparently there's. So widening of Thumbelina there as part of this.
That's not Thumbelina. There's a widening of the two forty six highway. Just, it's not, uh, Caltrans latest plan, I understand, is not all the way to Thumbelina. It's just short of Thumbelina.
I thought the idea.
But we will have a curb gutter and sidewalk going all the way to Thumbelina, but the widening of the road was our request to widen it all the way to Thumbelina. There are some engineering reasons apparently why that's not feasible for Caltrans at, at this time.
Has to do with alignment of the existing sidewalk further east of that area.
So that, I'm sorry, that confused me. So there's a, don't get mad at me. There's a stretch, there's a stretch of sidewalk that ends. Where the Ucliptus Grove used to be, right?
Yes.
And there's a talk of widening that.
There is talk of continuing the sidewalk all the way to the corner of Thumbelina.
Yes, is that in the scope?
That is.
Okay, how come it's in this scope?
It's, it's part of, it's part of the overall Caltrans improvements we're asking for. It's a, it's, it's sort of a. It's an improvement we have been discussing with Caltrans for several years. Those trees were removed. We've been discussing that. But they're asking us for a comprehensive. Plan of how we want to see two forty six change. So we're throwing all the, all the.
Overall safety.
The, the overall.
Throughout the entire two forty six.
So the, that is something, that particular improvement is something that is already apparently on Caltrans. Uh, improvement plan within the next couple of years to start that construction. What we have been told though is that what we've requested from Caltrans is not what they are currently budgeting to construct. They will give us the curb gutter sidewalk all the way to the corner of Thumbelina, but they will not give us the second lane extension all the way to Thumbelina. They will stop short of Thumbelina. Because of the sidewalk issue there. They have, there's, there's an engineering requirement that Caltrans has that won't allow them to do that.
I would love, I would love to see that. I mean, like we talked about that company at office, but I'd love to see that because I wasn't, I wasn't. Clear that that was going to be part of what we were basically requesting to do.
It's just they've, we've included everything that we can think of that needs to be done for safety considerations. And, and that because of primarily because of the sidewalk. That's, that's what, uh, that's why we've included that there. We asked them for an extension of the highway, uh, lane, the second lane, but. But that's not there. We can get you a copy of it. It's.
Yeah, I would like to see it, but also because like it's apparently we're discussing two different options, like hey, maybe one lane, hey, maybe two lanes.
We, we, we're giving them two options in hopes that they will give us one of them. You know, we're, we're asking, we, we prepared two different approaches. One is the more aggressive approach, which is a single lane in each direction. If they will go with that, that would be ideal from a traffic safety standpoint, because you've only got one lane of traffic for pedestrians to cross.
How come we're giving them another?
Because we want something and we know that, that the one, the single lane, uh, request is probably a reach. We, we want to give them as many options as we can to keep that open. So we had to keep it manageable. Otherwise we'd be. Paying through the nose for consultants to do studies. So we gave them two options, a single lane and a double lane.
I would have another question, but I'll, I'll follow up. I, I am fine with additional spending on the consultants. I, I leave tactics to you all.
Councilmember Sanchez.
The eighty one thousand dollars to get more studies to find out, does that, that doesn't give us anything. Uh, concrete that doesn't pay for paint, that doesn't pay for, if, if after we spend all this and we've, and, uh. Which we've been spending study, study, study. If at the end of the day, they say. I know we won't do that. If, if, if we're just chasing this idea of. Thinning of slowing traffic and thinning lanes and the one lane, the, the less lane things. It doesn't make sense to me to try to, I know you're talking about skinny, but making it less navigable so that people slow down. Uh, if they say we're not doing that, then everything we've spent here so far is just. Or just to make us feel better like we're trying.
Well, there's, that's why there's two options, as Scott said. There's the single lane, which may be a reach, um, but. Maintaining two lanes in each direction with additional safety features and pedestrian and bike safety features. Should be something that they should vet, but it's all within sign standards. And the idea is that we get that. Pre-authorization. So when we go through the encroachment permit process. It's a little bit more expedited. We're not waiting through the encroachment permit process, spending money on design, like a full detailed design. And waiting ten years back and forth, you know, to get a design and a permit to actually construct. This way we're getting. Like a nod ahead in writing from them that says, okay, we like option A or we can approve of option A. Um, and not option B or vice versa. And we're going to take that and build our design. From that and submit an encroachment permit using that pre-authorization to streamline our permit process.
The encroachment permit would be for.
For the actual implementation.
Changing lanes and.
That's where we get into, we get the encouragement permit, then we pay for the paint and whatever.
Spending this money will save us money in the long run is what I'm hearing.
I, I will say that if we, if we do not spend this money, we will not see these improvements happen. We may spend the money and not see the improvements happen depending on what comes out of it, but we will not see them happen. Probably in our lifetimes, um, unless we spend this money, either now or later, because they. Caltrans will not act on this unless these studies are done. And so we can do them now and see where they go, or we cannot do them and wonder whether or not they would have approved it had we done them. That's kind of the, the, the position we're in right now. So.
And do we have a cost of what it would be to add a, like a red light? Or a more, another tra, another crosswalk or anything like.
That's part of this process. So the concept plans show. The proposed locations for more of the flashing beacon lights, changing them out instead of just the. The yellow flashing to an actual red light, pedestrian activated light. It won't, it's not a traffic signal. And we still have to meet, make warrants that it has to meet. Um, and that's what KOA needs to do is prepare those warrants to see if, if they are able to be installed. Because it's a full traffic control signal as opposed to just a pedestrian flashing. But those are alternatives and the crosswalk locations, they're identified in our concept plans already. So we do have those.
But, but to answer your question, we have not done a, a, a comprehensive detailed assessment of what the project will cost.
Right.
By the time it gets approved, the costs will almost certainly be different. And no matter what Caltrans approves, if they want the city to pay for it. You're all going to have to sit and decide how much you want to spend and which improvements that they would approve you actually want to have constructed. So it's, it's a little premature for that kind of detail at this point.
So if we have any desire of doing Caltrans improvements on the two forty six, this money is critical to make that happen.
Yes.
So can. Any questions, Vice Mayor Lewis?
No questions.
No further questions?
Kind of in the middle of some questions.
I'm sorry.
The, um. Then you, we were talking about warrants. Do you know if there's any warrants at all right now? Does it, when we were talking about the crosswalk at the, uh. Uh, flying flags, you said there was like nine warrants that had to be qualified to add a crosswalk.
There are similar type things, you know, for the crosswalk improvements themselves and for the flashing beacons. So those are part of the studies that KOA has to do as part of their submittal to Caltrans.
So they actually have to kind of.
They'll have to perform.
We know what the warrants are because those are, those are in the manual that has to be met. What we don't know is whether or not. Our current conditions with, on highway two forty six and the cross streets will meet those warrants. That's what these studies are going to tell us.
And it, and they can still say, no, thank you and.
They absolutely can.
I just.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Or is anyone looking to me, submit a motion at this time?
I move to approve the additional cost of eighty one thousand five hundred and the budget amendment to increase. CIP number, number, number from thirty nine thousand, seven fifty two to one twenty one, oh, seven two.
Second.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi, Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi.
It's still annoying that it's that expensive to get them to even consider things. So. I will just make my complaint, but it's not, you know, neither here nor there.
Moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, a few items for you this evening. First of all, just a reminder that at the next meeting, our plan is to have another deep dive discussion. This next one coming up will involve, uh, traffic calming measures such as the possibility of speed humps. We'll get into a little bit of detail on that. And then you as council can give us direction or direct, direction as to how you'd like to see us proceed with that. Uh, item from there. Another plug really quickly for the Wine and Chili Festival coming up at Flying Flags this Sunday from twelve to four. Uh, tickets can be purchased at, um. WWW dot, uh, Bilton Wine and Chili Festival dot com. An original name there. We do have, um, a community meeting that the city is participating in hosting. Uh, that is the community meeting on preparing, uh, the Sanin's Valley for the threat of wildfire. Uh, there are a number of different organizations, uh, involved in this particular meeting, but it will be held. Uh, Monday, March thirty first from five thirty to seven thirty and it will be held at the solving city council chamber for anyone who cares to attend. And then lastly.
Can all of us attend?
What's that?
Can all of us attend or can only two?
I will find out. I'll have to discuss that with the city attorney's office and give them the details of what this involves. And I'll, I'll, I'll find that out.
Just informational, more or less.
Yeah, uh, but let me, let me get this information to the city attorney's office so they can give me a good read on it and, and I'll let everyone know. Lastly, Councilmember Horne, um, mentioned this earlier, uh, but there was, uh, some. We're hoping there will be some. We're hoping there will be some interest on the part of the green team in taking on a role in the city's Thousands Trees Initiative. That's been, um, in the works for several months now. Um, some of the discussion that's taken, uh, place. As, um. Kind of sent us in the direction of maybe having the green team fulfill a similar role that, um, the Arts and Culture Committee. Uh, fills with the Arts and Culture Grant Program. Uh, in terms of selecting sites for trees to be planted, in terms of, uh, selecting particular species. Or whatever decisions need to be made with regard to the Thousand Trees Program, rather than having that be done at a, at a staff level. Or at a city council committee level, having a, a community organization, uh, a group similar to the Arts and Culture Committee. Take that on and the green team is a very similar organization. So, uh, we will, um. Gauge the green team's, uh, willingness to do such a thing and we'll come back to the city council at a later time. Uh, assuming that they are willing and, and desiring to do that, and then we'll have a council decide whether that's an appropriate action. But I wanted to put that on your radar right now so that, um, it's not a surprise if it comes up later. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but my report is complete.
Questions? Anything from our council at this time?
No, thank you for having me over Zoom.
Thank you. All right. We will adjourn the meeting at seven fifty something. Thank you for coming tonight.